I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Home call. Nelson Reevene.
Here.
Robert Hammond.
Here.
Larry Seer.
Here.
Mina Shade. Jim Steele.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Does anybody here have anything to say on the good of the meeting?
Mr. President, real quick, over the firefighter convention weekend, Ethan Ross, junior firefighter from Heritage, won the Junior Firefighter of the Year Award, and Kylie Shuster won the humanitarian award, both of which were the first from Memphis County to win those awards, so I thought it was appropriate to recognize them.
What was Ethan's last name?
Ross.
Thank you. Do I have the motion to approve all these minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Vote. I'll turn it over to Kevin now.
Alright, thanks, Mr. President. Let me scroll this down so we can see that. The yellow is just some changes that were done since the last agenda went out. It doesn't necessarily mean it's stuff that changes the aspect of the meeting. It just might be to add some numbers, or change the date, or something like that, so. First thing, we do have a night away day carrying here in town on the 20th September. I know in the borough they'll be working in our parks, with our DPW crew, working on the benches, and some other things. The digester DCE ARPA grant we're waiting for was supposed to be in July, and it's now been supposedly planned for 18th September at the state level. A year ago, when this happened, it was a $2 million bill. That was a year ago, so we don't know what the bill's gonna be now. But this million dollar grant, if we get it, is gonna help us a lot. We do have the tire day for used tires coming up in September 16th down at the warehouse, where you can bring your tires and get them disposed of. Is there a cost for that?
No, it's free.
No? If they charge you, I'll pay for it, it's free. DCED workshop, that's coming up. So that's something Jim Zubler was working with, the county planning, and bottom line is, I have it up here if you guys want. Basically, it's a discussion of what monies are available out there through DCED for municipalities. Let's see if I can find it on here. There's somebody that this is it, right here? Hey Jim, I told her I'd attend. Do I need to send you an email?
Nope, I doubt it.
You got it?
We're getting good response, so I think it's gonna be a very informative workshop.
Excellent.
Kim, do you show her no guards for your tires?
I'm gonna go back in my files here and look, I didn't think there was. I thought I got it in here somewhere.
I know it wasn't last time.
It was a couple bucks per tire, so.
Well, it depends, I didn't break big truck tires and stuff, and that costs more than a, like, car tires. But I know the last time they charged. Yeah.
Alright, let me dig into that, and I'll go back to you guys in a minute.
I mean, just somebody that'd get down there and pick in the brake.
Agreed.
They're telling me I have money.
They got a truckload of tires.
Yeah.
I'll get back in, heavy, I appreciate that, I'll go back in and look that up. Let me make another that. Alright, workshop. Myself, I believe, Ed's rep, probably Lucas, and the waste water treatment guys are going to Harrisburg on 5 October. We got a meeting with DEP concerning the INI violations that occur in the borough. Whenever we have heavy rains, the INI, which is infiltration and inflow of the sewer system, causes excess water flow in the system, and it overflows in numerous manholes in town, especially down by the river. And so they gave us some violations for that, and they wanna talk to us about that. We did have a plan to address some of that this year, with some ARPA money that we have requested from county, but that didn't come to fruition, and we also had money set aside to try to address it this summer, but we had to use that money to pay for projects on the Valley Street project. So I'll be down there in 5 October to deal with that. One of the discussions we had recently is the validity of the parking authority. What does it really do for the borough? It's still in discussion, and you'll see below it, there's a parking authority meeting on 28 September to kind of discuss this with the members here in the council chamber. So we'll move forward with that with the next meeting. Is he trying to say, oh yeah, yeah. Alright, Mark, it's getting started now, thanks. Alright.
Okay.
We're on number seven. No legal questions so far. Alright, one of the discussion items here in the near future is the police station. We have about two and a half years or so left on our lease, and we're looking at the possibility of putting some money into renovating the police station for the future. It's not been voted on, it's not been hit in anything other than a discussion at this time. The Goose Day is 29 September. Goose Day Drone Light Show is 29 September. So that is an event that the Chamber of Commerce, Vitters Bureau is having down, oh, what's the name of that cemetery on the edge of town down there?
Memorial.
Yeah, down there. I'll show you a picture where they're gonna do it.
So across from the intermediate school, by the tennis courts.
Yeah. Code's County DEP, Goose Day might be in here. Alright, so up in the top left there is Rec Park, so you can see where it's gonna take place. Now, we got the paperwork in for Penn Dot to close the road, etc., so we've done everything on our end. And that's one of the items you approved up with the consent agenda.
I had a lady calling me from Juniata County that has seen a drone show, and she said it is unbelievable, you're not gonna believe what they can do with those drones. So it should be a nice addition to the Goose Day celebration.
And supposedly, I heard they're coming all the way from Michigan.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to be pretty nice. The second annual town hall meeting is scheduled for the 24th of January. So if you attended the last town hall meeting last January, this will be similar. Basically, briefing all the aspects of what's going on for this past year, what's gonna happen in 2024, and into the future. 22 December 2023 is Employee Christmas Party. We'll be doing that down at the community center, and in the future, we'll discuss hours and a possible closure of the building during that event. We do have our Mabel payment coming up at the end of September. It's about $306,000, and that'll be set aside for council use only. Breast cancer awareness connection, they're gonna be hanging pink ribbons on Market Street for the month of October. Domestic violence awareness month, they're gonna do purple lighting such as at the fountain in October. Pending your questions, sir, that's my borough manager.
A report from the fire chief.
Thank you. First off, before I get started, sorry everybody knows, the bench was here a couple weeks ago. Larry Carter, Joe Maroney's back here, which is a major part of that committee. They've done a swell job, everybody I talked to was happy, no incidents that I'm aware of. To Larry and Joe, congratulations, you did a job well done. Okay, for the month of August, the department responded to 17 alarms. One one-man type fire, which we didn't find anything. One building fire, we had a vehicle fire, two medical assists, EMS, motor vehicle accident with injuries, and then we had a motor vehicle pedestrian accident, which unfortunately ended up being a fatality. We had a water rescue, we had gasoline, carbon monoxide incident, public service, we had a cover assignment, which is a standby assignment for the downtime company, and four automatic alarms. That's it for the alarms. But on public safety notice, on September 20th, the Red Cross is gonna be furnishing smoke alarms. Smoke detectors come way in town and needs it. My saw because of, they got together, we gave them some hotspots where we run a lot of alarms, but they're gonna furnish the detectors, the batteries, and they'll install them for us.
What day is that, Mark?
That is September 20th. Now, they went around the past couple days, was hanging these on the doorknobs. There's a phone number on there to call. If anybody needs one, call, and they'll make sure that address, and install one for you. That's all free of charge. That's sponsored by the American Red Cross. That's it for me, any questions? You good?
Mayor.
The only thing I have is to try to get an approval for trick or treat. Other years, it's usually the consensus of the municipalities and townships that I contact, if it falls on a weekday and it's not a Friday, we usually go with the actual holiday, Halloween on Halloween day. So that would be October 31st. The Halloween parade is October 25th. Safe Night Trick or Treat is October 27th, and then the actual trick or treating night would be October 31st. So we probably need approval for that, to define.
Any motion? I'll move along with the other municipalities in the area.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
The time, the time of six days has been that, thank you.
Hey Mayor, the 25th is a parade, what other thing did you mention on there?
Safe Night Trick or Treat's the 27th, that's Friday. The parade's always the Wednesday before Halloween, and the Friday before is Safe Night Trick or Treat.
Dave, police chief.
Okay, stats for August, we had 493 calls for service, 50 traffic citations, 18 non-traffic, 52 warnings. For the drug report for August, we had five active investigations, five new investigations, four undercover buys, we had one felony arrest, five misdemeanor arrests, three search warrants were conducted, four arrest warrants were served, we had an overdose investigation, and seizures were one, two grams of heroin fentanyl, 10 grams of methamphetamine, and seven grams of cocaine or crack. That's the drug report for August. Just to give you an update on our RMS grant we've been working on, we did start the administrative training for that this past week. So we're starting to do some training for the new RMS system. Training for the officers will be in October. Our tentative go-live date is November the 9th to be on to the new system. So we're progressing with our transition for defiling with citation and criminal complaints also, and that's part of that as well. We do have computer mounts and printers installed in patrol vehicles, and every officer now has their own laptop to carry from the vehicle, to carry with them all at all times. We did receive our new drone last week, Officer Lights has been getting familiar with that, so it will be available here soon. If the fire department, coast department, anybody else needs it in the borough, we'll be able to deploy that probably fairly soon, once it gets trained on and familiar with the new controls on that. We do have a truck or treat event we're trying to plan for October 21st, and that'll be at Rec Park. Do we need to do a facility use request for that?
Actually, she already did.
Okay, did she do?
Kristen?
I know Kristen was setting it up, I didn't know she did that either.
Yep.
And in common weather, we'll have it inside in the rec center, we already double plan to do on that. That's all I have for now.
Record, hook one. Mark, you have anything?
I don't, no, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Just COVID. Alright, alright. Unfinished, new business, Mr. President, okay. Fame, Mike, do you wanna discuss a request for additional $21,000 for funding for this year?
I'm here to answer any questions you have, if I can. I have some articles that actually just came out in the Township News Magazine that, if that being out, if that's okay?
Yeah.
This just, I mean, it's everywhere, it's just three forces that. So, yes, does anybody have any questions?
What exactly are you asking for?
We're asking for the rest, the remainder of the $24,000, or $45,000 we requested, which I believe is $21,000 left.
So hey, they came to the finance, good question, they came to the finance committee meeting and talked to the finance committee about getting the rest of their request. Their request is $45,000 this year, we gave them 24. They came to this meeting, a finance committee recommended we bring it here for discussion to talk about the other $21,000. But yeah, they're waiting for me.
Any discussion on that?
We're both discussing and not doing anything, alright?
What, Mike, if you don't mind just detailing, what's the $21,000 going towards?
It's going toward operations, equipment, personnel, our general expenditures. Each municipality that we serve gives us approximately a half mil or more. I believe the $45,000 is a little bit more than half a mil of taxes.
Alright, $45,000 plus is about .45 mils, roughly. Right now, we do .121, which is about 5% of the EMS budget, the, not the EMS budget, the specialty tax budget. So if you look at the numbers in there, there's two, and I got the chart, we showed it at the meeting, $250,000 in there. When you take out .74 mils for lighting, you take out 1.117 mils for fire department, and take out .121 mils, that's about $199,000. So you get about $50,000 in there that's not covered by mils. Now, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. I mean, you could go further and take that $50,000, divide it up by those mils again, but for a year, that's what that millage is. So theoretically, you could say there's $50,000 left in there that you could give to them, or you could say, well, that still belongs to the people that are in there, you know, and they got their .121. The bottom line is, and I talked to the treasurer about this, the .121 is only $12,000, you already give them 24, so you're already shorting them on the mils if that's what you're doing. So you're basically saying, we're gonna give you 12 out of taxes, and then we're taking 12 out of the general fund. So that's something you can discuss later on, as far as if you wanna increase taxes to get it up to the $45,000, which you'd increase the millage on that. Or you could take it from the general fund, or you could take it out of the money in the specialty tax, as the money's saved throughout the year. You got different options there. Do we, do I feel we have the $21,000? Yes. It depends on how you look at it, does treasurer look at it, think we have $21,000? No, I mean, I get it, though, I get her point if you want to, so.
Was it one of the discussions that we could maybe do some creative accounting and slide some over from the lighting that we're not using to help out?
Yeah, it's in there, you could. I have some charts on it, but that's the numbers, I mean, right there off the top of my head. Could you take it out of there, the EMS, 'cause that's where the money goes, take it and give it to $21,000, and then focus for next year for the raise in the millage? Yeah, you could do that. You can do that.
I think the calls for service on the borough has definitely increased over the last couple.
It has. Door, I got the numbers in the box, you had over 2,000 calls last year, didn't you, for the borough?
We had almost 3,000.
For the borough, just the borough alone, yeah.
28, 87, 88.
That's a lot, and a lot of people are getting older, and they look at the table. It's gonna be, I'm almost retirement age too, I'm not gonna lie. If you want the borough manager's recommendation, I'd say we approve the $21,000, and work through fixing the millage if you wanna do that for 2024. Where you do it, and tell them, come back, and we'll discuss it again next year. But that's a council decision.
May I make a motion to approve the $21,000?
That's second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote?
No.
It's a pass. Okay, passed.
Okay, and I just wanna extend an invitation to all of you. Anytime you wanna come up with us, you wanna ride along, wanna see our station.
No, I don't wanna go ride along and look at an accident victim, wouldn't you be crazy?
I would break your, run the siren.
Your grandson might wanna do that. But they do have a good kitchen with coffee, so I can tell you, if you don't get out your coffee, they'll give you coffee. Alright, number two, employee handbook. So we've been talking about this since last year, we finally got this, all the bugs worked out on it. It's in front of you for your review. I can promise you, there's been probably 50 different versions of it as we've gone through it. We've gone through every single subject in there. If it says we have a policy on this, we've gone back and checked, and either added the policy, or verified we had the policy. So I think it is ready for approval. You'll see on the front page, it's a draft version, because that's as of yesterday. But if you approve it today, then I'll go back and change the title to final version, 13 September 2023. That's the only change we've made. Now, the employee handbook does not supersede the Teamsters contract or the Ask Me contract. We still go by those, I mean explicitly, and the salary employees, same way. Bottom line is, the employee handbook is just an overall guiding document for employees have questions on stuff. And if there's a conflict in there, I'll tell you, please check the Ask Me contract or the Teamster contract for clarification of what they're asking.
Make a motion to approve the handbook. Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Vote?
And I think this is the first employee handbook we've ever had, so great job, play C H R. Alright.
It was a sketchy one, but.
It's put a lot of work in. Okay, Co-Stars code enforcement vehicle. We do have a quote for $39,332 for a Co-Stars vehicle, I think it's a Ford Explorer, let me see if I can find it on here. This, this ain't it.
This is new as opposed to used.
Yeah.
Right.
39, 32, this is it. Yeah, this is it. This is it, Kaylin?
Is that the one from New Holland? I can't see its range.
New Holland. Yep.
I can't hit it. The other thing is, it's not white, it's gray. But, yeah, that's it.
So we'd like approval to purchase this vehicle for the codes department, because our van, well, it's not in very good shape. We'd like to replace the van with this vehicle.
I hear Mark's moving on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Alright, let's put it on here next one. So 22 Ridge Lot Sale, I put that on here, but as I've gone through my records, you've already approved the sale of that lot. I just have to get the process, the big process put together, get it advertised, etc., so that's already in the works. But I will show you what the lot looks like, so you guys can see after they took the building, building down. So here's the lot, this centerpiece of property. We'll put that out for public bid.
How much does the borough have into that property currently?
Well, we, how much did it cost us to tear that down?
Um, $66,000, county covered half, so remember we sell it, so the county gets half of that back.
So $60,000 to tear it down? It was bad, it was the one that had the roof falling into the basement that.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
I, I think if we're gonna put it out for bid, I'd at least like to get out of what we've got into it. The last time we did this, we put $30,000, $40,000 in the property, and sold it for $5,000. We're not.
Was it the Valley Street?
Yeah. You know, I mean, that's certainly not a good use for borough funds, to give away property.
The county have, have.
Well, yes, the county did help us, but the borough had money into that as well.
Oh, yeah, they did have some, yeah.
So I would at least like to see the borough get out of what we've got in it.
We can get $30,000 for that, I think we take it.
We can get $30,000, I'd probably be more than happy to do it. But if we're gonna sell it to the neighbor for $5,000 so he can have parking, no.
You wanna keep it?
Let's keep a minimum bid of $25,000.
Yeah, you guys can set that, council can set that as minimum.
The other thing I have to think about is, we're still maintaining it, we're still paying our guys to mow it and maintain it, and to keep up the sidewalk.
No.
Drop.
The guy looks like he's about 20 feet long.
60.
It's not very big. Now, and I totally give you a couple of things, Nelson. Let's just say we sold it for, I don't know, $5,000, I don't know what it's gonna go for. Let's say you sold it for $5,000. The intent of that is to get it back on the tax rolls, so we get tax money out of it, the people get taxed for it, that's the thing. If the borough keeps it, then we don't get no tax money for it, and we just gotta keep maintaining it. And that was the intent on this, is getting rid of a hazard, because Dave knows it was a hazard when they had that murder investigation up the street, they thought they hid the gun in there, they had to go through the whole building, it was just a mess. But to try to get back on the tax rolls, because then we can make money out of it over time.
But if we put it back on the tax rolls, and we sell it for $5,000, and we put it on the tax rolls, the tax is gonna be almost minimal.
Nelson, you're 1,000% right, if we didn't have to maintain it, I'd sit with you all day and sit on it, but you gotta, it's gotta.
And we did that forever with the, with the Walnut Street, the North Walnut Street project.
What else could you put in there besides the driveway?
You're never gonna sell it.
Nothing for you.
Is the neighbor, is the neighbor, is that a rental property, or they?
Yeah, they're both rentals.
It's a rental. Yeah, I don't think we get anything more than the driveway.
You're gonna waste your time putting $25,000.
I should let him know why I'm tearing it down.
I mean, really, because you won't, you won't get. You're never.
I think we all agree with what you're saying, Nelson, as far as we wish, but I think theoretically, you might get $5,000 or something.
Yeah, you'd be lucky, you'd get $5,000 now.
But, but we, but it does go in the tax rolls, and we get some money back. So say, let's say we get $5,000, then county gets $2,500. That's why Chastity's here, to have to check.
If you wanted me to clarify, we actually currently put a third of it into it from the county, so that's that much less we get back from it. And with our BLIGHT program, we have, any of the projects that we have put demolition into, we're not in it to make money. There's no way you're ever gonna get demolition costs out of selling a lot like that. It's not a buildable lot, because whenever they tear it down, they just mop stuff into it, it's built. If somebody would wanna build, they gotta dig all that stuff out. Yeah, the goal is, you've gotten rid of the BLIGHT, you had the issue with the murder investigation. You hope to encourage the neighbors to take care of their property and.
Oh, we put it out for bid, and.
Everybody else.
I'll strike that rather than I am not.
Nelson was right, though, you do have to put a minimum bid on here. I could have been a bit on here, I don't know whether it would be $5,000, $2,000, and just go for the highest bidder after that? You just go for the highest bidder after that, I don't know. But we don't have to say what the minimum bid is, so we can, we can, we can talk about that later on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't say there's a minimum bid, just I forbid you wanna...
Highest guy is...
And achieve what we get.
Yeah, 'cause you still don't have to sell it.
Might, might be surprised, might, I don't think they will. Might be surprised not to get a bid, but...
You know. Positive opinion, yeah. He's right.
Does anybody, the owner of the property, have laid...
They've expressed justifying it just to get basically a drive, driveway so that they can put off street parking behind it.
So, they might be interested in...
Oh, they're definitely interested, yeah.
And it gives us from having to maintain, maintain it, not push on sidewalks. And we'd be great for our guys not have to pay any due done.
Make a motion to put out for bid.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
All right, the minimal, basically the MMO for the non-uniform pension, and then the MMO for the police pension plan. You do this on an annual basis. I could show you the forms, but the numbers are right there. So, what I would need is a motion to approve the payments of number five and number six. And we do this every year.
Separate, separate.
Even if separate if you want.
Make a motion to bail.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Was that for, separate or just five and six? Either way, five and six is fine. Five and six, okay. All right. This is a resolution, this is a reimbursement request for Valley Street demo costs. Let me pull this up. So, this is some of the money, we're talking about, Nelson, where we get some of the money back, basically on demolition, the Valley Street project, I think. Let me find out which one it was. This is basically an agreement with us and the county concerning the, the demolition of that, the big one, the big amount of property on Valley Street. Basically, we're requesting to get twelve thousand dollars back from the demolition project from, from county, right, Caitlin?
Second.
Yes.
Yes. So, we just need approval of this.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
All right, CDGB resolution approval. This is what Ashley Chastity's here for, 'cause we have to approve the motion, the resolution for this. And I think it was this one. Right here. This is the resolution we have to approve on our end to get the CDGB money for our project, which is what we're gonna talk about on number eight A, the next one down. So, we need this approved, and then it goes to coun, council or county.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
All right, so now we're gonna talk number eight A, which is paving West Fifth Street, West Fourth Street, North Grand Street. So, this year, we're paving and focusing on the south side of town. Okay, that'll be completed. Now, the next thing we're gonna focus on is these, these three streets, paving West Fifth Street, West Fourth Street, North Grand Street. Let me see if I can pull those up.
And when you say West Fourth, I'm assuming you mean from the library to...
Yeah, yeah. Down past Bill's house down there. It's basically from Bill's house up to the lot. Same with West Fifth. And North Grand goes from down here up to where it hits like county line road, county line, whatever that road is it goes on. Yeah, that way.
Yeah.
Except we, CD, CDGB, CDVG cannot be used to pave like that seventy-five yard section. We have to do that out of our state liquid fuels money, which we do have. That's why it's five-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, one-ninety-two with CDGB money and state liquid fuels. And then you got eighteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-two, which comes out of our state liquid fuels to pave that last stretch that's in the borough. Now, I can't find the picture of that one here. Anyways. We just, I don't even know if we need to approve that. I think that was already approved to do this. Yeah, this was already approved, this got in the, why I could get that started, so we'll look forward to that.
Were there no other streets in the south end gonna be paved this year?
Well, they're, they're paved in the south side, they haven't started yet, down...
What old, what old street is, is Washington Avenue gonna be...
The rest of them will get done this year, Debbie. The whole rest of the south side will be done this year.
Okay.
There won't be any more to do.
They're gonna pave next month, is the plan? Now, to finish up everything to the right of the street. I know, I talked to Lindbergh Way, too, that's a less...
We can't touch that, CDVG. On the left side of Main Street, CDVG can't touch it. It does not qualify for impermanence.
Is there any way that we can do that?
Not unless we got state liquid fuels money, or take it out of the general budget, or raise taxes. Paving costs, we got fi, we got a half a million dollars in state liquid fuels budget now. I think two-hundred thousand's coming out to support eight A, this project here. And then what's left, we're looking at paving some alleys next year. All those alleys, there's ten priority alleys, and we're trying to get caught up on some of our alleys. Those areas of town that CDGB cannot be used, we have discussed it with county with the maps and stuff, but there's no way around it. We have to fund it ourselves in the future. All right, number nine. Let me see if I can find this thing. This was a resolution, there it is, for council in support of the excellent performance of the fire department for their convention. So, basically, this is a, a resolution congratulating the fire department for a well, excellent-run convention. We didn't receive one complaint at the fire department, at the police department. I didn't get one complaint. No property was damaged. It was a perfectly run event, and the council is very appreciative of it, so they're doing a resolution. If they approve it, they'll do a resolution honoring the fire department on this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Larry, congratulations.
Did an excellent job.
Okay, um, the Crown Vic and the Co's van. So, we're gonna get a new car for Co's, so the van will be XS, quote unquote. And the Crown Vic is already down at the warehouse. I would like to take the police car and the Co's van and give them to the fire department, because they don't have vehicles except for their rescue trucks and their fire trucks to drive to their meetings and trainings and stuff. So, I'd like to take those two vehicles and give them to the fire department for the fire department to use.
I thought the Co's van was pretty bad that nobody wants to drive it.
We did talk about that. Fire department said, we'll take it anyways, 'cause we don't have anything, it's better than nothing. We can sell it if you want. We can sell them both, or you municipal.
If the brakes are out of it, and you gotta be a flintstone to stop it, I'm not, I'm not sure if this is really the best use of the...
Well, there's something one, so just give it to them.
But I understand where Nelson's coming from.
I think my, somebody worked on it and picked it up.
I mean, we have our mechanic, and that's, that's, maybe, I mean, I just, I just know the fire department that has no vehicles except for their, their rescue trucks and their fire trucks. And they do want these two because they're gonna help them, 'cause they don't have anything.
Yeah, yeah. You and I talked to Larry about it that day down at the, at the thing.
So, I think, I mean, it's either that or it goes to municipal. You know, we get rid of him, get a few thousand. I don't know how much we get for him for the, I mean, couple, five thousand, four thousand, three thousand, not a lot. But it'll probably get more use out of the fire department. Let's do this, I mean, Bob, do you want it for the fire department?
Well, the fire committee made it last night. The fire company said they could make use of it. One of them's really interested in the place car, and the other one said they could make use of it.
You have a motion on the floor?
Yep, we do. Number two, second.
Second.
All in favor, if you're giving these to the fire department, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
The chief said the Crown Vic will come stocked with arms and ammunition. I'll get back to you on that. All right, let's talk about number eleven. The T-Tag dump truck that we talked about in the finance committee meeting and some other meetings is, is a two-thousand-one, I believe. It's got a hundred-and-twenty thousand miles on it or something like that. They have found one...
Oh, it, it's a rust bar, it is.
Yeah. And it's what we use for plowing the streets, I mean, it's, it's, yeah. So, they found a truck, here's a picture of it. Here's the rear of it. It's all decked out, because the company that has it, we bought from before, is using it for shows. That's what they're showing to try to sell, and to show what they offer. So, I think that was the three picture right there. It's already got the plow, it's got the spreader, it's got everything. So, we're getting a huge discount on it, 'cause it's already been used as far as shows, and they got it at a show this weekend. So, the total is one-hundred-and-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-seven. It's already in the twenty-twenty-three budget. They would just like to move forward with making that purchase for this fall, because we gotta get ready for the winter season with the snow.
I, I, uh, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? pass.
I gotta let Ben know, because Ben has to call them and say, don't sell it. All right, DLI donation, which is number twelve. We do this every year, Jim, correct? Yep, so he, I got the notice in here, I got his letter from him, so we received that. He would like the, DLI would like the five thousand dollar donation, which we give him every year. I had the letter, but basically, that's what it is.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
So, it's approved. All right, number thirteen, replace wastewater treatment plant engineer firm with Eads. You, you guys have had discussions with me in the past about the wastewater treatment plant, and Gannett Fleming, who's been running it for years. And a year or so ago, I ran the numbers, and we paid them multi-millions of dollars over the years to run the sewage treatment plant. But there's been some ongoing cost issues where we will get bills that we don't understand what they're for. They don't itemize things, they're expensive. So, we have discussed this with Eads, and Eads is willing to come in and take over the wastewater treatment plant as far as engineering support. I don't want to do that unless I have council approval, because what'll happen is I have to give Gannett Fleming an official notice that they will not, no longer be needed after one January twenty-twenty-four, because Eads is coming in to take over the engineering process of the plant.
There's savings with that.
Yes, there is.
You haven't had any problems with Eads, have you?
Not, not in quality work, no. I mean, it, sometimes it's hard to get a hold of, I mean, we know that, it's hard to get a hold of people at times, 'cause he's, you know... But not in quality work. And his guys have been coming down already to meet with Dawn, they're coming down again next week to get a handle on everything before it even takes effect. So, they're already starting the motions of it. We'll just wait for final approval, so I can do my memos and stuff that I gotta do on my end.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
All right, the rest of this stuff, which is the open positions we were talking about, and executive session.
I recall, I'm gonna have to leave, we're gonna go into executive session, talk about personnel and legal matters.
Did you guys fix the roof at the senior center?
You go in the act.
Were there any public comments? Sorry, I missed that part.
Did you, did you get the roof fixed on the senior center?
What's the, you mean the community center?
No.
Yeah, the community.
Not yet, no. We'll wait for more quotes to come in to do that, because it takes at least three bids, 'cause of the cost.
Okay, I thought you had all of that.
No, we only had one, one quote came in for repair so far. I gave the finance committee that number, so I had an estimate. And one quote came in so far for the, the actual replacement, which is over a hundred thousand. So, we'll wait for other quotes to come in on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other public comments?